Good evening, welcome to the July 24th meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I'm Linda Harold, council member, and Mayor Poyer is absent tonight, so I will be filling in for him. And we'll start out with a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Atkinson, could you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Atkinson. Next, we're going to go into citizens' comments. But before we start those, I would like to remind you that RCW 42.17A.555 provides that public comments in support of or in opposition of a ballot measure is a prohibited use of public facilities and will not be allowed. So just keep that in mind, please. Is there anyone there that would like to address the council? Please come forward, give us your name and your address. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Acting and Council, Brian Brad, Wenatchee Valley Fire Department, 731 North Wenatchee Avenue is the fire station address. I'm here because I've been corresponding with Councilmember Harold in her capacity at the convention center with the remodel to potentially consider hanging a plaque, of which I'll bring up and show you in a moment, that commemorates a 50-year volunteer that put in the equivalent of having worked for the fire department full-time in addition to his normal career. The significance of this is Ron Roy is his name. He coordinated conferences at the convention center for how many years, would you say?
Probably over 30.
Thirty years of conferences. And the state fire departments host three to five conferences a year, depending on the annual or biannual conferences there. And during breaks while people congregate, if we were to have this plaque on display, I know that would resonate very well with all the firefighters and first responders of any type. So can I approach the bench?
Sure.
Sir?
This, can you hear me? Here, we got the hit.
Is it on Tim?
This is, this is a badge plaque. We were able to retroactively go back and obtain a badge for each rank, each position department that Ron served with for the past 50 years. His family was like, could we display this somewhere? And we do have other places to display this other than the convention center. However, that was our first thought, based on the history there. His family wanted it displayed somewhere to just honor his legacy in the fire service. So that's the context. I just wanted you to see it, the size of it in person for consideration. Beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Wow. It does have a base as well, so we have, we have ways of displaying it. The, where this is left often, my correspondence with the city is one of the staff members named Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Alyssa, forwarded to the mayor, mayor's office for consideration. So I just wanted to give you contacts for consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Likewise.
Is there anyone else? You're not speaking tonight, Brian? Okay, okay, we'll move on then. So entertain a motion for our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings, resolution number 2025-23, amending the 2025 designation of representatives to various community boards, councils, and organizations, and authorizing the representatives to vote on the city's behalf.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by council member, I can't say it.
Okay, Roganescu.
Roganescu, thank you. And seconded by councilmember Atkinson to approve the vouchers and agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings, along with to move to approve the agenda voucher minutes from previous meetings, resolution number 2025-23, amending the 2025 designation of representatives to various community boards, councils, and organizations, and authorizing the representatives to vote on the city's behalf. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay. I forgot, I forgot one major item. All of our council members are present tonight. Councilmember Uer is participating via Zoom. Are you there, Chelsea?
I'm here, good evening.
So we'll move on then to our action items. Oh, we have a presentation first from the Wenatchee Valley Humane Society.
Good evening, council and acting mayor. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you all tonight. The, the actual mayor and I discussed that it might be a good idea for us to come by mid-year and sort of give you an update on what our animal control services have been doing for the city of Wenatchee. So I'm terrible at PowerPoints, they're distracting to me, and I hate building them, so I just give you handouts. I'm old school that way. At the top of the page, you'll see, this is a picture of my cat, Daniel Thunderpaws, who is now a licensed resident of the city of Wenatchee. I found a place to live and we got him licensed according to, to RCWs and city codes. First time I've licensed a cat, so very cool. Just a few highlights that I put on the notes here. All of our officers now have body cams that they are wearing in the field and recording everything. This really helps us to review cases, helps to corroborate information when we're looking, particularly in really heightened emotional engagements, to see what really happened, and to help with witness statements. It also helps us with training our new officers. We have several new officers this year, and it's really great to review how they handle cases and go over that for, for training purposes. They all just completed a training today. All day, we had a de-escalation and defense tactics training for all of our officers. That was excellent. We also attend outreach events in the city to show the soft side of our program and that we're not just dog catchers. I'm accompanied tonight by Duchess, who is an adoptable dog. She's been with us for way too long. She's a fantastic young dog who loves children, not so much cats and chickens, but looking, she's got fantastic manners. We have no idea why she's not adopted yet. So she comes around to almost all of our outreach events as an ambassador dog. So anyway, we've been active in the community, the Apple Blossom Parade. And upcoming, you'll see on the second page of your handout is a flyer for our partnership with the city of Wenatchee on the Dog Paddle Swim. We've worked really hard. Our development team, particularly Tina, has got a group of vendors that are coming, food carts, and a doggy obstacle course. So people who have dogs who don't even like to swim can come and have a great time with their dog and enjoy the event at the city pool. So we're excited about that. And we'll be participating also at Salmon Fest in September. We are planning to host a license amnesty event in each of our jurisdictions. We are just launching a new online licensing platform that we think is going to make it a lot more easy and attractive for people to license their pet. It automates email reminders when the licensors are due and allows pet owners to put a lot of personal inform, I mean personalized information about their licensed pet. So if it has special medical needs, who its veterinarian is, so if that pet is found, it can have the best possible care. Great licensing platform, also allows people to get prettier tags if they want than the little metal ones that we make. We're excited about that platform. The license amnesty event in our jurisdictions is an opportunity to go out in the community, have a day where it doesn't matter if your license is expired, if you let your rabies tag, or you never licensed your dog, pet owners, and you can come and you don't get any penalties. Usually, when we run these things, when I've run these things at other organizations, the licensing fee is waived that day, and we have a veterinarian and vet staff on there to provide microchips and rabies vaccines on site. So it's a really cool community event. Sounds like, why are we giving away licenses? We get an opportunity to gather a lot more people into the system. It's, one of the things that many of the jurisdictions will comment on is how many people are actually licensing their pet when it's the rule. So when we're, as animal control officers, we're out in the community only talking to a few pets, the animals that we interact with directly that we enforce licensing on. And then responsible pet owners who seek us out and license pets because they want to follow the rules, like my Daniel Thunderpaws. So these licensing amnesty events allow us to get more pets in the community licensed. So we're looking forward to that in 2026. I just put on there that we only see about eight to 10 cats a month licensed. And right now, I think the Wenatchee and city of Shalan are the only jurisdictions that we know of that ask pets, cats to be licensed, and I really appreciate it as a cat person. Other numbers that I put down in here, I gave you the breakout of the specific different kinds of responses that we've had in the community in first quarter and second quarter. Total for all the quarters, we've had 373 total cases. The majority of those are dogs at large. But we also, in the first half of the year, have responded to 26 neglect and cruelty cases, investigations. Most of those are neglect, I will say, in the field that most situations that we're running into are just neglect. They may be criminal level neglect, but it's very seldom that we run across actual criminal cruelty. We have had dogs chasing and getting into altercations with other dogs. There's only five. Dog in vehicle, 13. We're really anticipating a lot more of that. We're trying to do a lot of public service announcements and awareness based on the new state law that passed, allowing citizens to rescue pets and vulnerable people from hot cars. We're trying to get the word out and do some proactive information, particularly in the tourist towns of Leavenworth, Shalan, and Wenatchee. People come to town. It's a dog-friendly town, but you got to have a plan for your dog when you want to go to a restaurant or go shopping. So doing a lot of that. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I gave you the flyers. You can look at the numbers. I do want to take, there are, public service is an odd one. We have, hmm, 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 public service, seven of those. Those are our most random cases. That's a skunk with his head stuck in a peanut jar, peanut butter jar, in somebody's garage that we go and help. That's, but it also is things like a cat who's currently in our shelter named Fritz who came into us. He had a microchip. He'd been adopted from us. We knew his address. Nobody was coming for him, so our officers went out and posted a notice on the house. The owner's daughter came and saw the notice on the house and informed us that unfortunately, his person had gone into an assisted living situation that didn't allow pets. So that's a kind of public assistance. We're out there helping the public, and now we're finding a new home for Fritz if anybody's looking for an adorable orange cat. We do deceased animal pickup, and basically, we're primarily focused on responding to public safety, but also just kind of public support in those ways, helping out the citizens in the city. Any questions?
Any question? So question, Fritz is open for adoption?
He is. He's adorable. Oh my God.
My husband is dying to get a cat.
He is the cutest, sweetest, round-bodied, affectionate orange cat. I love him.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, and we appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you.
You're providing a very important service to the community and to an often neglected population of our community that we all dearly love.
Yeah, thank you. I also want to tell you that we have, speaking of that, we also did outreach to our neighbors at the mission earlier this year. They had a parvo outbreak. It's a highly communicable virus that is often lethal for puppies. A gentleman came to our door early in the morning and his puppy was dying. We helped him with the euthanasia for his puppy. And then we went next door to the mission and coordinated with them to do free vaccination for all the adult dogs and puppies that were with the residents or anyone who visits, because a lot of people just come and hang out with their friends who live there. So we were able to provide free vaccines, free parvo testing for any dogs that had symptoms of parvo, and hopefully got them set up to be healthier going forward.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is apparently very boring for the dog. She's fainted. But thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm quite proud to be a Wenatchee resident now.
Excellent, thank you.
Duchess is beautiful. Okay, moving on. Our first presentation is by Parks and Rec Director Dave Erickson.
All right, well, thank you, council, Dave Erickson, Parks and Rec Director. I have a PowerPoint. That way you don't have to look at me. So this evening, I'm requesting a motion for the city council to approve a facility use agreement with the Rotary Club, and this is a renewal of an existing agreement, and this is for, and then authorize me to sign it, so. Let's jump in a little bit about Rotary Park. We'll give you a little bit of history since we can. So Rotary is located at the, sort of the intersection of Western and Maple Street, if you don't know where it is. A little bit about the park itself. Construction really began in earnest around 2003, and it was a partnership between the city and the Rotary Clubs, with some state grant funding thrown in as well. So the city got some, at that time, IAC grant money, so RCO. Park features, a number of different items that are super popular with the residents and visitors, everything from our splash pad to picnic shelters. We have a peace plaza. Now we have pickleball courts out there. So a whole litany of features. The picnic shelters, I can mention, are the busiest in our park system. So we've had over 6200 people attend reserved functions in the shelters last year, and a countless amount that were attended that didn't have it reserved and just kind of showed up and used it. So a lot of that. Rotary, the Rotary Club has actually been an active participant and is super interested in helping develop this park over the years. You've got everything from the initial groundbreaking up on the upper left all the way through some of the improvements that they've done over the years and have helped with, from the playground being assembled by volunteers to the picnic shelters that they constructed, the parking expansion project, and then also the peace plaza on the bottom down there. A few more of the elements that Rotary has helped build. There are all those things that you see listed on the screen there. So virtually every, almost everything in the park Rotary has had a hand in. Back in 2009, the Rotary requested that they get free use of the picnic shelters. Well, we can't allow the free use, so one of the things that we did was develop a facility use agreement that really took into account all the funding and efforts and everything that Rotary has provided to the park over the years and continue to. And so through that facility use agreement, then Rotary gets to use the picnic shelter for six Rotary functions a year, reserved functions, at no charge. And so what we're requesting this evening then is a renewal of that agreement, because who knew that 2009 is so far in the rearview mirror that we'd have to do this again? So we took this to the Arts, Rec, and Park Commission. They unanimously recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval of this. Thought I could try to answer any questions you might have.
I was curious, is it unique to this that it has that insurance requirement? I mean, I'm assuming other groups don't provide insurance and name the city. I mean...
Actually, most, most of our facility use agreements, they do, yeah.
So just an individual birthday party?
No, individual birthday parties, no.
But entities?
Entities, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, school district, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Is there any major changes to it?
The name of our department has changed, the people who are signing it have changed, and the dates. That's really your biggest change.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the facilities use agreement renewal with the, with Wenatchee Rotary Club and authorize Park Recreation and Cultural Services Director to sign.
Second.
It has been moved by councilmember Hornby and seconded by councilmember Atkinson?
Navarro.
Navarro Gomez to move for city council to approve the facility use agreement renewal with the Wenatchee Rotary Club and authorize the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Director to sign. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Next up, we have City Attorney Daniel Merchant.
Good evening, Daniel Merchant, City Attorney for Wenatchee. Before the city council for consideration is proposed ordinance number 2025-08. This ordinance does approximately three different things. The first thing that it does is it's, well, let me back up. The statute that talks about the city administrator says that the mayor is the executive officer and the administrative officer of the city. But that same statute allows the mayor to assign or to hire an administrative officer to take over those administrative functions. So that's what the city administrator does, takes over the administrative functions, the day-to-day operations from the mayor, so the mayor can focus more on policy issues. So our current ordinance or our current city code has that position, the city administrator position appoint is, what's the word I'm looking for? It reports to the mayor and to the city council. Those are two different branches of government. One is the executive branch, one is the legislative branch. So because the administrative duties are under the mayor, it is, this ordinance, what it does is it takes away that reporting requirement to the legislative branch from the city administrator, since it's a mayoral duty that the city administrator is taking over. The second thing the ordinance does is that it has overlapping duties in our current city code with other department heads, and so it's removing those overlapping duties and reassigning specifically in the code the duties that are going to be only to the city administrator. The city administrator job description was recently updated by the HR director, and so this code provision will align those duties that the job description has within the code, so that the code and the job description will not conflict. Mayor Poyer wanted me to notify the city council that it was a group effort in terms of determining the new job description for the city administrator, and also a group effort from the department heads to determine how the city code would be amended. Are there any questions?
So did I understand this correctly? This puts us more in alignment with what state requirements are?
It puts you more in alignment with the RCW.
Yes.
Yeah, it does. So.
Are there any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance revising WCC 111010 and 111020 relating to the city administrator's position presented by City Attorney Daniel Merchant, relating to the city administrator, including the powers and duties of that position, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It has, it has been moved by councilmember Navarro Gomez and seconded by councilmember...
Quelas.
To adopt ordinance number 2025-08, amending sections 1.11.010 and 1.11.020 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to city administrator, including the powers and duties of that position and establishing an effective date. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is by Charlotte Mitchell, project engineer.
Hello, everyone. Charlotte Mitchell, Senior Project Engineer. So we were hoping to come to award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder for this pavement preservation project. Bids opened this morning at 11:00. We got three bids. Central Washington Asphalt had the apparent low bid at $1,865,000. Unfortunately, our project budget is $1,625,000. So it is a good amount over our, over our budget. And so the request tonight is a motion for city council to reject all bids for city project number 2401, 2025 pavement preservation. The idea is that we'll rebid it this fall, hopefully get better numbers, and then construct it next summer. Any questions?
At the finance committee meeting, Ryan went into some of the reasons for why we might get better pricing maybe for the rest of the council.
Oh, yeah, for sure. This is quite late in the summer. There was another chip seal project that was pretty big in the region that we didn't know about, and so a lot of the local contractors are busy with that project, or at least the big one. So, yeah, we get better bids in the fall, generally speaking, because contractors are a little more hungry. Right now, they're just in their really busy time of year, and so they're not as, we say, hungry for work because their, their schedule's pretty full. Yeah.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to reject bids for the 2025 pavement preservation city project number 2401.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Hornby and seconded by councilmember Atkinson to reject all bids from the 2025 pavement preservation city project number 2401. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple more things. How many miles were we going to do this year?
So it's about 8.4 miles, I think, we're in this project, yeah.
That's good, see, and obviously, you know, I think we're pretty focused on pavement preservation right now. And a six-month or whatever delay is not the, not the big issue that we're looking at, right?
Correct. There won't be an appreciable degradation of the roadways in the, whatever, six months until we can get this work done, yeah.
Right. And we're still operating well under what our desired funding level is with this project, right? I mean...
Correct. The current funding level is close to half of what would be required to reach and maintain the council-approved citywide average of PCI of 70, payment condition index, sorry. It's just the rating. I think anybody have questions about that? I think we've talked about it before. Okay. It's the industry standard.
Right. Okay, well.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Finance Director Brad Posenjak.
Good evening, council. I'm Brad Posenjak, Finance Director. Tonight, I am asking for authorization to sign documents for further opioid settlement agreements. Over the past few years, the state attorney general has been, has been litigating for settlements with various opioid providers over the, over the last few years. And we have been signing these agreements of participation, and another one came about, and I think they are going to continue to come. So this motion actually authorizes us to sign the current one with Purdue and then any other opioid settlements that come through, so that, I think you've heard me talk about this about five, six times now, and hopefully you won't have to hear me talk about it again. But over the course of the next 15 years, we'll probably end up... end up with about a total of 1.5 million. That can only be used for certain purposes, for opioid prevention, opioid abuse prevention and remediation. The city has partnered with several other cities, counties in the region, and they've got a third-party administrator, and so they make sure all of the funds are getting spent on the appropriate items. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I know that my biggest question for the team during our Finance Committee meeting is where does the money end up? I think we always ask, well, where is this funding going? Working in the public school system prior to this year, I was able to see, Together for Drug-Free Youth, bring informational opportunities to families, and they would actually train on parents on, these are the commonplaces where young children will hide opioids, or, you know, there's now sweaters that are built to hide their vapes, et cetera. So just know that these, these funds truly do impact our community. So just wanted to share that.
With regret that we won't be able to hear Brad, as often, I will move with the City Council to authorize the Finance Director to sign any documents approved by the city attorney to effectuate the city's participation in the Purdue and Sackler and any future Washington statewide opioid settlement agreement.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Atkinson and seconded by Councilmember Rosathian?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm about half dead. Councilmember Hornby, I apologize. To authorize the Finance Director to sign any documents approved by the city attorney to effectuate the city's participation in the Purdue and Sackler and any future Washington statewide opioid settlement agreements. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Jesse King.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jesse King, project engineer. I'm here to request the city rejects all bids for 2025 damaged luminaire replacement project. The project is three streetlights that got hit by cars. We packaged that up into a project, put it up to bid. We received nine bids. Three of them were non-responsive, and six of them had calculation errors. The lowest bid was due to a calculation error with unit prices, and it locked off about $20,000 off of his bid, so we just want to rebid. There's no time constraint on this project, so going ahead and rebidding seems like the best course. Are there any questions?
This is bid rejection night.
Yeah, very unusual.
It is unusual.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to reject all bids for the 2025 damaged luminaire replacement project, city project number SW 25-01.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hornby and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson to reject all bids for the 2025, oops, damaged luminaire replacement project, city project number SW 25-01. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donald, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm Donald Nelson, Senior Project Engineer, and before you is this contract that we would like to have for a consultant firm to prepare plans and do research to help us find out how much of our roads we can get fixed with the money we have available. Any questions?
The visuals are always helpful. Thank you for always including those.
Yeah, I think Linda brought up at the Finance Committee meeting that these are roads with an average rating of 58, so they're definitely need attention.
Yeah. And in order for an average to be that low or that number, it means there's some of these that are less, but they are salvageable at the moment.
And this would help us to determine how mu- how much we can do.
Yeah.
Very important project.
As you said before, I just have a question. I'm just wondering, my goal's 70, how, how long does it take, like, after, you know, the work's done for it to drop to below 70, like, just a normal, on-average thing?
Lifespan of a road.
Oh, thank you for helping.
Yeah. I'll, I'll help out on that one. So it kind of depends on the road and the substructure underneath and how much traffic it gets. So like, an arterial with really heavy truck traffic is going to deteriorate faster than a brand-new residential roadway that, you know, gets 30 cars a day. So it's really hard to say. There's too many variables.
I was reviewing your presentation today. I didn't think I'd ever think about roads as much, except when I was working in college on a freeway job, and then I was dreading them. But, no, I mean, I, I was amazed at, we were at 70 for several years in the early 20s, and how quick we got down to 64. Now, that's citywide average, but it doesn't take that long to drop that average.
And it's usage, so like, maybe increased traffic shortens the lifespan type of thing as well?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And it, it's not a super linear drop. It'll, it drops slowly right at the beginning, and then all of a sudden, you know, a lot of times, it'll, you know, it'll decay pretty quickly. So that's why you try to work on roads when they're slightly higher, so it's cheaper to keep them in a better condition. Yeah.
Makes sense.
I concur with what she said.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator, city administrator to negotiate with PT Inc. for design services for the 2026 pavement preservation city project number 2501, and further authorize the city administrator to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second. It has been moved by Councilmember Rosathian and seconded by Councilmember Cuevas to authorize the city administrator to negotiate with PT Incorporated for design services for the 2026 pavement preservation city project number 2501, and further authorize the city administrator to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Any discussion?
I just have one clarifying question. So this is not solely for the research. It's also for potential upgrades, payment work?
This is the design team that does the research to figure out what it will cost and then draws up plans and presents them so that we can go out to construction with plan set.
And the total cost being?
That's what it's budgeted for.
Okay, it's, okay, it's the $2 million, essentially?
No, it's $200 and some thousand.
That's the whole project.
Okay, okay.
That's the, yeah, at this point.
Thank you.
So if you move to the contract page...
Three oh five, I think.
In the set, it'll be the front page of the contract.
Thank you, sorry. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to open up our public hearing. I now call the hearing to order regarding the 2025 down to 2029 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan. We will begin with the staff presentation, followed by public comment. For anyone wishing to address the council on this matter, please be sure to step up to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, providing your name and address for the record. We will begin with staff presentation with the council, and then open it up for the council for questions and comments, followed by any public comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Have before you tonight a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2025-25 to approve the 2025, lots of 25, 29 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Annual Action Plan. The City of Wenatchee receives Community Development Block Grants funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a requirement for the receipt of these funds, we have to do a five-year plan every five years, which sets our goals and policies and our priorities for our community to spend those funds. And then every year, we do an annual action plan for what our projects are to be that, project or projects are to be that year. We held, if you recall, we held a hearing on May 22nd, and we have received no public input during this time period or at that hearing, and we talked about the priorities of that plan. And the, if you recall, the council and mayor historically have shifted our, the focus of our funds to pedestrian and accessibility improvements. While there are certainly many needs in our community to help low and moderate-income persons, it's most efficient with the limited funds we do get to focus them on major public facility improvements. As an example, our efforts on First Street Corridor, which are beginning this year. And we try to spend the least amount of time on, on staff and the most amount of time on the projects, and to be as efficient as possible. And so that's the approach that's in our plan. The city currently has $789,622 of unspent funds. These are earmarked for the First Street project. It will be spent down as the project begins in August. We anticipate about $960,000 over the lifetime of the five-year plan, and this year, we received $234,918 for the 2025 fiscal year. With that, I would answer any questions you might have on the recommendation tonight.
Do you guys have any indication on where this funding's going to go going forward?
We don't. We have been watching the Association of Washington Cities, and they are a bit, they've noted the uncertainty on whether these funds will continue in the future or whether they'll be reduced. So at this time, at least our plan's in place. If they do continue, then we can continue to use them in the fashion that we've, you know, the city's set up and preferred. But there is a lot of uncertainty going forward.
It's mostly because the state is experiencing such a huge deficit.
These are federal, though.
Yeah, they're federal, but it's also, it trickles down to the state as well.
I've watched, this is my second plan with you, so, and your yearly updates are great. I think this is the best way to use those funds, to have a benefit that lasts for a long period of time that affects the most people, so I appreciate that approach. And I think it's important that we point out how little staff time that we charge these grants, so that the funds can go directly to impact our citizens. So, once again, it's focusing on pavement preservation, doing the best we can to keep our roads in access for pedestrians as well as handicapped individuals. ADA access is extremely important. We have an elderly community here that's quite large, and someday I'll be there, too, so.
Yeah, I was riding my bike down first the other day, and I noticed the existing curb cutouts are, it's a little bit of a bump to the street level, yeah, so.
Is there any more questions? Okay, we'll turn it over to the public at this time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. I'll turn it back over to council for action.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt Resolution number 2025-25, adopting the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Action Plan, authorizing the mayor to sign documents related thereto, and authorizing the Director of Community Development Department to administer the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hornby and seconded by Councilmember Navarro Gomez for the City Council to adopt Resolution number 2025-25, adopting the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Action Plan, authorizing the mayor to sign documents relating thereto, and authorizing the Director of Community Development Department to administer the Community Development Block Grant Program. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I think that brings us to the part where we give our reports. Laura, do you have anything that, from Mayor Poyer? Nothing? Okay, I'll give a quick report on what I was doing earlier today. I sat in on a two-and-a-half-hour Legislative Committee meeting for the Association of Washington Cities, and we talked about several things. Next year, just so you know, is an election year. It's going to be a tough year to get anything through the legislature, because it's an election year, because they also have such a huge deficit, and it's a short session, so they won't be making any big changes to the budget. But things that we're really concerned about are under fiscal sustainability. The, we want the authority to use lodging, it was brought to our attention that we should have the authority to use lodging tax dollars for workhouse, workforce housing, and of course, the lodging, Association is very opposed to this. Public safety, there was a huge discussion on indigent defense. They want to lower the caseloads for indigent attorneys. Homelessness, this is, this is huge on the agenda. Their, AWC is going to continue to support programs to reduce homelessness. They want to expand resources similar to the state ROW work, but targeted to city-owned properties. There's also the discussion on rent pricing, if we can stabilize that. Part of the problem for people finding homes is that they can't afford to rent. I know rent here in Wenatchee is very expensive, and they definitely can't afford to purchase, so some kind of rent control or something came up on the discussion. Housing affordability is, and the lack of housing is still a huge item. Transportation is sustainable funding is a high priority in our infrastructure. They are very concerned about preserving the reliable funding for our Public Works Assistant Account. They believe the state will continue to rob this account, which they have been trying to do all along, so that's all I've got on that. Also, something that's coming up with Laura's departure is that she was chairing the Lodging Tax Administrative, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and I would just like to suggest that maybe Mayor Poyer be the one to chair that in the future, if possible, so. Councilwoman Cuevas, do you have anything?
I don't have anything at the moment, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Councilmember Hornby?
Mayor Protem, I've got nothing.
Nothing? Councilmember Atkinson?
I was able to attend the Washington State Traffic Safety Summit last week with a few other people from Wenatchee, and found it to be very interesting and informative, and, you know, it's changed my driving, you know. I mean, in the state, the fact that we've gone from, you know, 400 fatalities a year up to 800, down a little bit last year, but just sobering. And I, I think issues around speed, distracted driving, one of the state senators who has been working on reducing the blood alcohol number down to .05, and I was impressed that he said that, you know, he's an older gentleman, but that's what he's going to keep working on. And so, anyway, it was very interesting, and I think some things that we can put into effect here, so.
That's great, thank you. Councilwoman Navarro Gomez?
Well, first and foremost, we are very excited to get our application window is open for the Junior City Council. So if you have any high school students that are interested and just learning about civics, we would encourage them to go onto our website. You can find a direct link there. We're just super excited. I know, Charlie, you have really been instrumental in this opportunity. I know, Charlie, you have really been instrumental in this opportunity, so please, 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 send them our way. We've been communicating with all of our private schools, with our public schools, and just inviting them to share it. We know that it's summertime, and kids are probably just having a great time, but our deadline is September 20th, so that we can hopefully get the first junior city council meeting at the end of September. That's very ambitious, we know, or even the first week of October.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we had our first application. Tammy reported that.
Okay, so, please, keep sending those our way. We also attended the Crail Cottage groundbreaking. I know Councilmember, yep, was there as well, and it was just so exciting to see how, as a community, everybody has really put in whatever they can to really, I mean, from the engineers basically donating their time for the project. I know that they were shy a certain amount of funds, and they reached out to all these different entities, and they got more than enough funding to be able to provide these low-income cottages. And if you haven't already, you can look them up on the website, but they have this beautiful little brochure, en español y inglés, because ideally, we know that a lot of our Latino and Hispanic community members tend to struggle with housing. So, just very excited to attend that event as well.
It's very exciting. This is low-income housing for people. I think that...
Was it 80%?
Yeah, 80% below the normal or the average. Anyway, I think it's pretty exciting, because it's going to be, people are going to have the opportunity to own their own home that they probably would not have had before.
Yeah, and this is only the first project, so we hope to see more projects like these. So, I would encourage all of us business owners or people that are in construction, maybe think about that. I know I have a brother-in-law that works for, he owns his own steel and panel construction company, and I said, would you be willing to give back to your community and say, okay, my workers are going to go out and they're going to install the steel and panel, you know, frame? So, just something for us to think about of how can we give back, little or big, right? Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there anything else for the good of the order? Chelsea, are you still there?
I am here, and I do have anything to report.
Did you have anything for us?
She said she didn't.
Okay, okay, thanks. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rosethian and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.